I'd like to call the meeting to order. February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And roll call.
Ms. Snell?
Here.
Ms. Matoye?
Here.
Ms. Fuhr?
Here.
Mr. Davenport?
Here.
Ms. Franco?
Here.
Ms. Black?
Here.
Ms. Yelsey is not present.
Here.
Okay, we have one card on closed session item, and that's Britt Doughty.
Don't you want me to read this now, Madam President?
Yes, if you'd like to.
Thank you, since the brief has to be read. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on closed agenda, closed session agenda items. Each speaker has three minutes to address the board, and speakers may not cede unused time to other speakers. With board's consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard.
So, good afternoon, Mrs. Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, and members of the cabinet. I just wanted to speak to labor negotiations, specifically to the tentative agreement for the calendar for the two thousand and nineteen school year, and give you an update on where things stand. Our ballots, well, so initially NMFT was trying to do an electronic-based system for doing the election. However, we got a little bit ahead of ourselves and realized that we didn't have an approved internal process for doing an electronic procedure. So, we fell back to our standard, which is a vote-by-mail system, so that slowed us down a little bit. So, we, our ballots are coming in, we plan on counting the ballots Thursday afternoon after school, and then we'll get, send an update to Ms. Olson as quick as we're able to Thursday evening, possibly Friday morning. And then, I believe the plan is to bring a recommendation to the school board through Ms. Olson at the next school board meeting. So, I just wanted to give you that update where things fall, and we are then also trying to put into place our elections process so we can do electronic-based voting in the future, which can make things much quicker and speed things up for all of us. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Britt, do you have to follow through with the notification policies of all other organizations? That you know, the forty-five days in advance of a mailing and twenty days in advance with your bylaws?
So, it varies. For officers, yes, we have to notify that we open the process forty-five days in advance. For ratification, no. Our procedures, we have to give a fifteen-day posting window, and it's in terms of when the agreement is out there for discussion before we begin counting ballots. So, we're trying to send that out electronically, you know, the TA, and send it out to everybody so that they get it electronically, and then ask our site reps to post it, you know, at school sites, going from there.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, I guess we'll go into closed session. I'd like to call the meeting to order. February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. We are going to start with the opening ceremonies, a moment of silent reflection and pledge of allegiance to the flag led by Max. Oh, I'm supposed to do this, sorry. It's too far away.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undrawn, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I needed a longer moment for reflection tonight. Okay, so, adoption of agenda. Move adoption.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to adjourn the meeting today in the memory of Bill Noonan, former human resources director in Newport Mesa. He hired me. He has a warm place in my heart. He was a gentleman, a caring mentor, and over the course of the last week, I've been participating or reading many, many, many positive things that have been said about him, so I would like to do that. Start his career here as a teacher. He started teaching here? Well, see, he knew how to hire good teachers.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and adoption of minutes?
Move adoption of the minutes as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and now we're down to student board member reports. And we'll start with...
You get to start, Max.
Okay.
I'm Max Johnson, I'm from Corona Del Mar High School, I'm here to give a student board report. So, under academic updates at our school, we're working to add a CTE pathway program that will focus on engineering and computer programs under the project Lead the Way. And also, we're having kind of in a sports update, we have all our teams made it to CIF, all our winter sports teams, which is really cool, so we're really excited to watch them the next few weeks. And we're starting a March Madness game. It's like a two-on-two tournament throughout the school, so, and everyone that's coming out to support, that's really cool to see. And then, we have formal tickets are on sale, and our formal's on March third, a little farther back than everyone else's, but that's when we had the venue. And Valentine, and for Valentine's Day, so for tomorrow, we're selling Valentine's Day grams, or actually, Valentine's Day grams are free, and then you can pay a dollar to get a rose sent with it as well. And so, those are going out to all the second periods, anyone that sends one. And then, we also have a sit-with-us campaign this week, and that's just promoting everyone being inclusive inside our campus. Yeah, so that's it, thank you.
Okay, Alexandra.
Good evening, President Snell, board trustees, Dr. Navarro, and members of the cabinet and distinguished guests. I am Alex Leon from Early College High School. And a little bit of our academic update at our school is, last week, we had our students of the semester luncheon, honoring students who have earned a four-point-O GPA or had made an increase of at least half a point in their overall GPA. So, that was last week, Friday. Last week, we also had Spread the Love Week, which was a highlight of, we did many activities to promote connections and showing appreciation towards one another, and it was really fun seeing our student body come together. We did a photo wall, which was very successful, so it was so much fun putting all that together. Also, last week Saturday, we held our winter formal. We had about a hundred and five students go, so that was kind of half of our student body, which is very exciting to see. A lot of us had a lot of fun, and we can't wait to see how it goes next year. Also, our school will be starting President's Week starting Friday and up until Tuesday, and then classes will resume on Wednesday, the twenty-first. Last week, this upcoming week, we will be holding our first of our two shadow days for prospective students that want to come to Early College High School for the upcoming two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year. So, we're excited to let these students come onto our campus to see what our school's about. And lastly, we are in our last month preparing for our WAS visit that will occur on March eleventh up until the fourteenth, and we're looking forward to what the visit committee has to observe and leave us with recommendations for our school to work on. And ASB's preparing a lot of welcoming posters and having our students informed, just to make the committee feel welcome. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Very nice, Alexandra.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Melanie Nunez, and I'm representing Back Bay High School. At the end of this, at the end of this last semester, seven Back Bay High School students had, who had caught up on their credits, returned back to their home schools in order to spend the second semester there and graduate. Now, for some general information, we've been having the YES program, it's Youth Employment Services, on our campus for a few weeks now to help students find jobs, work on resumes, and letters for a recommendation. Our new PTSA, Purchase Yoga Mats, for our upcoming yoga classes. We're going to be having yoga classes held in the yoga garden, so that's going to be exciting. We also have this new concept called the Breakfast Club. It's a place for students who arrive to school early to eat, stay warm, or just hang out until class time. Students may arrive as early as seven fifteen and go to the counseling office to be comfortable. It's a wonderful thing for students who have parents that may leave, work, to work early and need to drop off the students at school pretty early. All right, thank you.
That's nice, yeah. Wonderful. Yeah. With their yoga mat.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Rachel Kirkorian, I'm representing Coast to Mesa High School. It's CIF week, we have a boys' basketball game on Wednesday against Westminster at seven PM. Our girls' polo team will be away Wednesday, and we're waiting to hear from our soccer games. Mesa is very happy to bring back the basketball bell last Thursday night. And then, congrats to our cheer team, who just got back from Florida, that's why I lost my voice. We're second in the nation in our division. And then, this past Friday night, I'm sorry?
Out of eighteen schools?
Yes, out of eighteen, yeah. And this past Friday night was our fourth annual Dancing with the Teachers, and as usual, we had a very packed house. This is an incredible fundraiser for our dance team, and it's awesome to know that Dancing with the Teachers has almost become a district tradition. Solo night is this Thursday at seven PM. Donations are being accepted and then given to American Cancer Society in memory of Ms. Sheldon. And then, we have a Mojave Wilderness Experience trip with our MS students this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. I can't see behind there, who's next? Okay, so Van? Oh, it's strange not to see you up there, but, okay, good. You have anything to add? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, moving on to the Harbor Council PTA report with Vicky Waldo.
Good evening, President Snell, board members, Dr. Navarro, cabinet. We had our reflections gallery for Orange County on Saturday. It was very well attended, they estimated about a thousand people there, went all day, and they had nineteen councils that participated with entries, a total of three hundred and fifty entries for Orange County. Our council had submitted twenty-five artists for consideration. We have nine that are advancing, two of them are going to state for first place. We're very excited about that. The schools that did have entries that placed either first, second, or third place were Lincoln, East Bluff, CDM, Adams, Anderson, Newport Coast. They came from those schools. Overall, there's two hundred and seventy-five schools throughout Orange County that participated in the reflections program. Our participation has increased over the last year. For two thousand and sixteen, we had thirteen schools that participated. This last year, we had seventeen. And in two thousand and sixteen, we had four hundred and sixty-four entries, and this last year, we had five hundred and ninety-two. So, we're working it. And we're working on a date to be able to bring in the first and second place winners to present to you.
Good, thank you.
We had our Harbor Council meeting last Monday, and we thank you to President Snell and to Mrs. Yelsey for attending the meeting. We were fortunate in having Dr. Navarro and his cabinet speak to our PTA presidents about the district's crisis protocol for immediate aftermath of any event and the long-range effect. The PTA presidents were told of the expanding of the Suicide Prevention Committee, which I think is great. And they were just there and answered a lot of questions with the parents, because obviously, it was a, you know, it was a meeting with a lot of questions. So, we're very happy to have them there and answer the questions for the presidents. We also had a speaker before that, her name's Monica Abend, and she's with Homeland Security. She's a special agent assigned to the Orange County Child Exploitation Task Force. And she, she is just a no-fluff speaker, a lot of facts, very direct, and a lot of good education. She discussed internet dangers, the, she ran through a portrayal of criminals that have recently been arrested for child exploitation, where they came from, how, you know, how this came about, what they did, their method, et cetera. It was really a good opportunity for people to hear. And our meeting was well-attended, even though we had a high incidence of flu going around. It still reached a lot of the PTA presidents. But Monica Abend will come out, and she'll speak to kids from third to sixth grade with a presentation that's appropriate for their age group, and she will then also address kids older than sixth grade. But she also has a program that I think is really appropriate for parents, for parent education, since sometimes the kids seem to know a lot more about this than parents do, which I thought was very interesting. And I, Harbor Council would be interested in doing maybe a joint venture of some sort with the district, in sponsoring her out to talk to maybe one, one talk within each zone. We bring her in and invite a parent education night, and she can give them a lot of information, a lot of facts, for them to be more aware and more knowing of what's going on and how it happens. So, I'll pursue that with the staff, but Harbor Council would be very interested in doing a joint venture like that.
I think it's great.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, twelve reports, twelve A NMUSD, Mental Health and Crisis Response Initiatives. Sarah?
Yes, good evening. It follows on the heels of the presentation that was done at Harbor Council. I'm going to invite Dr. Phil DeAgostino and Angela Castellanos, our coordinator of Mental Health Services, to come up and share some information of kind of what we've done so far, where we are, kind of, and our next steps in terms of dealing with mental health, well-being, and crisis response in the district.
So, good evening, President Snell, Vice President Matoye, Dr. Navarro, members of the cabinet and members of the public. Thank you very much for having us here to give you this mid-year assessment and to discuss emerging issues and next steps in what has been one of our, I think, one of our proudest initiatives in terms of what we're doing for students and families in student services and the responsiveness that we're getting from our school communities as well. As you know, we had a tragic incident recently. It's not the first time that the Newport Mesa family has experienced a situation like this. And we had planned to give you this presentation before that actually occurred. So, it is timely, and we're just glad to be here. So, what do we want to do tonight? We want to give you an update on what we've done since the passing of AB twenty-two forty-six and your charge to us to develop a board policy and administrative regulations around that. We're going to give you an overview, a greater detail of what we do in terms of crisis response protocols and our procedures. And then, we're going to talk about some emerging issues and future considerations as we continue to make this a centerpiece in student services. Just to revisit the scope of the challenge, mental health issues and student well-being are becoming an increasing significant issue in all of our schools across the country. Probably the most alarming statistic there is the one in the upper left-hand corner, where one in five children between the ages of zero and eleven are coming to school with some kind of mental health condition. That's twenty percent of our kids with anxiety or depression or bipolarity or various other things that could be just perking under the surface, or could be very serious and involve, require additional services. So, what have we, so AB twenty-two forty-six, as you know, is the suicide prevention and education legislation that was passed two years ago that was designed to take effect this year with a planning phase and actually, an implementation phase in eighteen nineteen. As you know, we decided to implement in this year, seventeen eighteen, ahead of that, and we started planning before that. So, we completed a review and revisions of all of our policies three years ago, and two years ago, we adopted board policies and regulations, I apologize. Last year, we adopted board policies and regulations. We began training for crisis responders. We now have over seventy crisis responders, multiple teams that can respond to multiple incidents at multiple sites. We created a suicide prevention task force that's made up of stakeholders from throughout the community. This involves psychologists and counselors and social workers, members of the Hoag Wellness Center that they have just off of there, off of Placentia Superior. We also did training for seven through twelve staff, and we're starting training for K through six staff this spring. And then, finally, we're also doing training for secondary students through our Signs of Suicide program. We've already met with the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee and gotten input from them, and that's something that's taking off this spring. What, our goals and objectives were pretty ambitious. We, from September of two thousand and sixteen, starting with drafting some board policies and regulations, all the way through, our goal was by October, November, to have all of our assessors trained. We're proud to report to you tonight that every one of these targets were completed by their due dates. So, I'm going to turn it over to Angela Castellanos right now. She's obviously our expert on the, what we do and how we do it, so she's going to take this part of the presentation.
Thank you, Phil, good evening, everybody. So, before I go on or talk about what the crisis response team does, I want to talk a little bit about what we respond to. And so, most of us in this room have experienced some kind of a crisis in our lifetime, and we've been able to cope with it without any significant impairment. But what the crisis intervention does is that it supports individuals that any crisis that they're exposed to, that can potentially create some stressful or post-traumatic stress symptoms, but the crisis intervention does that. It helps to stabilize the individual. And what happens is that with crisis intervention is that it helps to stabilize the individual, but it also helps to mitigate. So, the research also indicates that the faster the response, the faster the individual's able to cope after the incident occurs. And so, what you're going to see here is a different examples of what the crisis response team responds to. One would be witnessing a traumatic event, so we're thinking about or talking about any kind of act of violence, shooting, a car accident. The other piece, too, is serious injury or death in the line of duty. So, this kind of sounds like it's law enforcement terminology. However, we know that there's a lot of statistics involving that there's impact of student injury, staff injury on campuses on a daily basis nationwide. The other piece, too, is that we respond to responses to suicide and also natural disasters. And so, one example would be Hurricane Harvey impacted students in eighty-three school districts. And so, crisis intervention was provided to those individuals after the incident occurred. Again, we're looking at shooting, killing, wounding of innocent victims, any act of violence, significant events that involve children. An example would be any type of allegations of abuse that's occurring on a campus. That's something that the crisis response team will respond to. The other, the last two bullets really are connected together, so one would be prolonged incidents of some type of a loss or excessive media interest. An example would be nine eleven, even though the incident occurred in another part of the country, it impacted us here nationwide and internationally as well. And so, what the crisis response team does is it addresses those particular issues that are connected to any kind of incident. And so, the response team, the crisis response team is actually trained and certified by the International Critical Incident Stress Foundation, and that's the same agency that certifies first responders and law enforcement. And it's a thirty-two-hour training, and they're training a variety of different interventions, individual, group, strategic planning, and triaging. And so, the training doesn't stop at the thirty-two hours of certification. Actually, as a coordinator, part of the process is that I'm coordinating the event, but I'm also coaching the responders as they're providing the interventions during the site, because I want them to be, we want them to be comfortable in providing the intervention as well. And there's also follow-up care, but the other aspect, too, is that we don't want the responders to be practicing during an incident. So, what we do is that we've created a series of refresher trainings, where they're constantly trained and reaffirmed with new techniques and interventions so that they're able to be abreast of what the different aspects of crisis response are. So, the other part, too, is that how we intervene. So, as a critical incident is identified, as the coordinator of crisis response, the activation takes place immediately, so I begin to start planning the response time. And so, there's an alert system that we use, which is the Titan Alerts Response, and that's when I start to activate it or send out a broadcast to our team members to see who's available to respond to that particular incident. And so, in the process, I'm actually able to create the strategic planning and then developing a plan to determine who's going to be providing the intervention at the site, and I start to, again, activate the team. And so, we know with crisis response is very dynamic, which means that it can change on a day, daily, by the hour. And so, this process is actually taking place throughout the entire response time. So, we're constantly changing the plan as, as it, you know, it evolves, right? And so, we're constantly communicating with the Director of Student Support Services to make sure that everybody's abreast of what's happening at the site level. And so, two areas that we look at when we're doing crisis response. So, as we wrap up the crisis response process, we want to make sure, is number one, we have to ask the question, do we provide the right support, right interventions to the right people that were impacted? The other aspect that we look at as well is that we want to make sure that we're providing the right support systems once a crisis response team is gone and wrapped up. We want to make sure that the site is receiving the right resources available. So, that's the other aspect that we do, is that we do brief with the site to make sure that we're providing the right recommendations based on the need that's, that we hear about during the process. So, this is a recent example of the response that we just did, which is the Corona Del Mar. Keep in mind that the numbers look huge, because we're looking at any time that there's a crisis responder in the actual intervention, we're counting those numbers as well. So, we're providing individual, small and large, support interventions throughout the process. So, with this particular response, it took about fifteen minutes for me to be able to create a plan. So, as soon as I received the call, I was able to alert and send out a broadcaster, a broadcast through Titan Alert and create an agenda, a schedule, to make sure that there, there were enough responders. Throughout this process, we had twenty-seven trained responders that provided support to students. We were able to provide two hundred and sixty-three contacts to staff, and almost nine hundred students were provided with some kind of support on the campus, and also, five hundred and seventeen parents were supported throughout this process. We were able to provide two risk assessments, able to mitigate that risk for our students. One of the aspects about the training that takes place is that the responders are highly trained in identifying immediate needs, are taking care of any medical needs or psychological needs that are immediate, that those are taken care of right away. So, we were able to mitigate those two risk assessments that were provided. So, the, the planning phase from the activation of the incident until the response, and then the wrap-up time, it took about nine, nine days of planning, time and response, in that particular piece. So, what's working? So, with crisis response, and Phil talked about this in the procedures that we've been developing for the last year and a half, is that one of the areas that we are proud of is that there's a rapid response process. It's very organized, and we're able to deploy responders right away. The other aspect, too, is that there's a lot of district support, and it's really nice to see how everybody comes together to be able to provide the support to students. The other aspect is that the crisis responders are invited to participate in this training process, and they're very excited to, not excited, I don't know if that's the right term, but they, they like to support their colleagues if they're providing some kind of support in another, another site. So, it's very collegial. The other aspect, too, is that when I look at crisis response, even though we're part of the Newport Mesa family, we're going in as guests to another territory. Well, one of the pieces that we're seeing is that the site staff is very supportive and very receptive to the, the support that they're receiving from the crisis response team. The last piece, too, is that we've been able to create partnerships with three key community agencies. One is the Orange County Department of Education, TIP, which is the Trauma Informed Program. And those are the, the agency that actually gets deployed when there's an incident that happens, and they're able to communicate back to us all the facts and information about the particular incident. And the last piece, too, is that we've been able to create good partnerships with the coroner's office. So, working together to be able to make sure that we're providing the right support to students, it's key. The other aspect, too, is that the expansion of the crisis response team has cost the district zero dollars because of our partnership with the Orange County Department of Education. So, that's really nice to see that, that piece. So, I'm going to kick it back to Phil, and he's going to talk about future considerations.
Thanks, Alexandra. You know, just one, I just wanted to share one experience. On Monday, we met with the principals, and we've been having some really good conversations about what we need to do to support the well-being of all of our students and families in the district. And I had the opportunity to talk about social, emotional issues with Angela and Sarah. And, you know, one of the things that came up was that in the midst of the CDM crisis, there was a moment right before the parent meeting on Monday night, when we had, as Kathy Scott put it, we had every, almost every district official there in the room with Kathy and her site team. And there was, there were, there were no titles at that time, there were no, there wasn't a hierarchy, there wasn't, there, there was a team of people wanting to address issues to support. issues to support the immediate family, as well as support the entire Corona Del Mar community. So, um, I think we have a good response team now, I think we have a good protocol, we have a culture of responsiveness and receptiveness from the administrations, and I think we're, we're moving in the right direction. But I think we can do more, so we're here to share some considerations. Um, our timeline is, um, as you can see here. Um, we wanna reconvene and repurpose the, the task force, gonna talk about that in just a minute. We need to train the, um, elementary staff, move to students at the secondary level, um, continue developing parent education nights, and then, um, do district-wide staff trainings. So we've already done, um, the repurposing of the task force, we're gonna talk about that in the next slide. Uh, we're looking at this timeline roughly for the remainder of these large tasks. And so, the secondary student training, um, you know, we've got S-BAC tests coming up, we've got the California Healthy Kids Survey, uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna stretch out the training of the secondary students on an ongoing basis for the remainder of this year and into the fall semester of, of next year. There was a meeting of the Suicide Prevention Task Force on February seventh. It was a really productive meeting, there were about thirty people there, uh, including people from, uh, the stu- Superintendent Student Advisory Committee, we had people from Hoag, we had assistant principals, we had counselors, uh, we had school psychologists, um, it was just a very well-attended group. And the first thing we realized is that we don't really need a Suicide Prevention Task Force anymore. What we really need is a Wellness Task Force, um, to really look at the bigger, because here's the issue. Yes, there are kids who are anxious and depressed, but they're anxious and depressed for different reasons. Some kids are anxious and depressed because their parents are going through a divorce. Some kids are anxious and depressed because there's a lot of pressure on them to go to college. Some kids are anxious and depressed because of, uh, their brother running away from home, or what have you. And it's not just anxiety and depression, is it? It's, it's a variety of, um, mental health issues, um, that portray themselves in various dysfunctional ways and cause kids and families to struggle. So what would this mental, uh, this Wellness Task Force do? Um, they're gonna continue working with us to collaborate and expand on suicide prevention and education, obviously, but also advise us concerning social and emotional issues, review policies and procedures. They were really instrumental in reviewing AB twenty-two forty-six language for us, promoting mental health initiatives, and determining the optimal resource allocations for what we have in terms of serving students and families. Most importantly, um, a lot of the members of this Wellness Task Force will come from our community. There are a, there is an abundant number of experts, um, in our community. Uh, we had many, many, uh, individuals contact the district in the wake of the CDM event, and, um, and so, we're, we're connecting with them, we're setting up meetings with them. Uh, I have a meeting at the end of this month with people at College Hospital, uh, so there's, there's a lot of good dialoguing going on in terms of building partnerships. So considerations moving forward. Um, we believe there needs to be an additional training for, for almost everyone. Um, so I have, I, I got the opportunity to be at the principals' meeting on Monday, uh, training seemed to be a theme there. Uh, the Wellness Task Force said that training is also, uh, something that's important. So finding the right kind of training, uh, and, and the content is something we're gonna be looking at, uh, very, uh, soon and moving forward with that. We're gonna continue to d- discuss inter-divisionally how we can execute Board Priority B, which is that behavior priority. Uh, this year, um, the Education Division and Student Services meet, um, with all the directors to have conversations. We've had some really great conversations about the role of counselors. We've had great conversations around social and emotional issues, and I think that is, as you know, I've, I've been in this district for a little bit, um, this is my eighteenth year here, and I, I, the, the inter-divisional dialogue that's going on right now, not just over this issue, but over a variety of issues, is really creating a lot of synergy, um, at all of our schools, and so, uh, very excited about that. Um, we need to leverage additional technologies. Uh, the, the Titan Alert app has been fantastic for us, uh, in being able to alert, um, our responders and mobilizing very quickly. That fifteen-minute response was in part because we sent out an immediate, um, alert to our responders to, to mobilize and create teams. So, um, what are we, we're talking about remote training, we're talking about, uh, the cognito system, for example, which we're piloting at the elementary this spring. We think that's gonna have some promising results with the elementary teachers and administrators, so we're looking at all of that as well. We're gonna continue to refine and revisit our crisis response processes, uh, that's just something that's just ongoing improvement, you know? And then, we're gonna continue researching proactive measures and, and prevention strategies. Um, one thing that came up very recently, uh, is, is this, um, Challenge Success opportunity, and so, I'm now gonna, I'm gonna bring in the closer, as they say, uh, my, my amazing immediate supervisor. The, my amazing, immediate supervisor. Uh, you know, you know what's great about her is that she lets us do our jobs and let, just lets us run with it. All of this is, we just ran with it, and Sarah has been so supportive. So I, I'd like to ask the Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services to come up, she's gonna talk about the Challenge Success program.
Well, I, I think you can tell I have great staff, so, you know, Phil and Angela have, um, have really taken this on, and, um, I think probably one of the keys was, is really getting, was getting Angela on board and working with our district, and just the experience that she had, um, you know, with other districts within California, nationally and internationally, just, um, you know, the things that she does, um, really brought a different level of expertise and a different set of eyes that we hadn't had before. So I think, um, you know, they, they definitely, um, do all the, um, the dirty work, I just come in and, and get to look good at the end. Um, I will say that we are probably going to need to change the name of the Wellness Task Force to the Wellness Work Group. Um, if you look at the acronym, it probably needs to be changed, so, um...
Finally getting that.
So, um, so, um, I, and one of the things I, I just wanna highlight for you as we're looking at this is, in, in two years, we, we went from four crisis responders, we started with this with four people. We have over seventy people, and I, I, I just want you to get that they're internationally trained. This is a high level of training that, that our staff volunteered for, so, you know, and it's, it's across the different, um, job classifications and job duties, and, and, you know, they're, they're still going back at the end and doing their own jobs. So it's not like they get this, oh, I'm gonna go hang out at, you know, CDM and be a crisis responder for a week. They're still doing their, their own work and their own job. So, you know, we really, um, appreciate the people that, um, have volunteered to do that, and it'll also allows us, um, allows Angela to put together the right group. So she may have had fifty people who said, "I can support that," but she wants to pick the best ones for that school for the certain reasons, um, and then have staff available if we need them for something else. So we don't wanna burn anybody out, and we also have to watch out for our crisis responders in terms of, of their, um, mental health impact of, of doing this. So I just wanted to kind of, um, share with you, um, and I, the board is aware, but, so the public is aware of kind of one of our next steps in really dealing, um, not, not with suicide prevention and intervention, but really, um, working with Challenge Success. And the way they kind of define it is they work upstream. So they're not dealing with this immediate, um, kind of crisis and how we, how we deal with crises in the district, but they're looking at what is our culture, and what is our, um, community, and, and how do we, um, how do we look at things for our students? And so, one of the things we're doing, um, is this group is, um, is out of Stanford University. They, um, they, I think they started in about two thousand and ten, there was a rash of, um, cluster suicides in Palo Alto, and they came together with experts, and there's also experts, um, kind of continuing on their advisory board to deal with these issues. So they have a lot of experience in dealing with this, and, um, Dr. Navarro reached out to them, and, um, they're willing to come and help, and they think they can help us, um, and work with our schools, and it's really a, um, multifaceted approach. They're going to be working with our staff and helping our staff look at culture, what are we, what are we, um, kind of perpetuating for students, what are our expectations, and, and helping them take a look at those things, working with students from each of our high schools, starting, and then, uh, moving on to different levels. But really, um, getting different student voices of the high school experience, what's working, what isn't, um, and not just, um, our great students like these who come here, but the students who maybe are less involved and less engaged, and to get all of those voices heard. And then, um, ultimately, to also have these conversations with parents, and to see once, you know, where's the role of parents, and, um, you know, dispelling some myths about going to college and what your GPA needs to be, and, um, you know, what AP courses you have to take to be able to get into a good college. So I think all of that, um, is needed information, and one of the, um, reasons that we're looking at having an outside entity do this, number one is they have experience. They've done this, they've done this within California, and they've done this nationwide. Um, so we always want the best, right? And I think also, it allows them to ask the questions that, um, if internally we may not think about because we're so close to the issues and we, um, we just do things 'cause we've always done it that way. And instead, they may ask the questions of why are you doing these things, and, and getting a little bit more information. So, um, we're excited about this, um, kinda next step, and we're figuring out how they fit in with kind of the work of Student Services and, and being able to move forward. But, um, I just wanted to share that information with you, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, does anybody, oh, we have a couple of questions. I just wanna say, great presentation, and, um, really admire your group for your foresight and getting in there, um, and getting this going, so that we were able to respond most recently, instead of waiting a couple of years down the line, so, and you've got it all laid out, and, um, great, thank you so much. And, we have Ms. Patoye.
Sorry, I was cho- just choking, just posting, just choking. Um, is, is this going to be available, that what our plan is, is it on a cooldown as a resource? I mean...
Oh, well, one of the things that, um, I'm working with in that as well to figure out how we're going to kind of publicize, um, all of these different aspects of our, of our work.
It's more of, more, more of a resource rather than, look what we're doing. It's, as a parent, I would wanna say, what is Newport Mesa doing, and, boom, there it is, so good. It's, it's in the works. Thank you. Whoops, I meant to undo it. I forgot you undo it.
Mrs. Flor.
Yes, uh, again, thank you, and fabulous job, um, both at Corona Del Mar and at all our schools, because, um, this is what it's all about. I have a little bit of a more nitty-gritty question.
Okay, I'm sure that's gonna probably require...
That's probably gonna go to Phil.
It's probably gonna, you know, the people who know.
But it really is an overarching question, because it, it, it came about from we all being there on Monday night with, um, the family, is that there were issues, but the young man had dinner with his family the night before, everything was great. So my question is this, where and who can a friend go to if they have a friend who they know is in crisis? Because you know, the attitude of students, we, we're promoting this, if you see something, say something, but we don't necessarily do that in the context, if you see somebody or you see a friend who is saying something, or behaving somewhere, or is just a little off, or even my mom or my dad, or there's a family member that's off, who do I, who can I tell, who can I go to?
So, um, so first of all, that's why one of the considerations moving forward is training. I think one of the elements that we definitely need to train on is for staff to be able to identify students that may be at risk of certain kinds of behavior, or harm, or, um, crisis. I think also, uh, it's really important that, uh, the students are trained as well. Um, at the elementary level, our staff are gonna be working with students on teaching them resiliency and character, and the things that would, um, allow them to cope and, and work with, um, work with themselves, their inner self, to be strong and resilient. So I think that training piece is, is, is absolutely critical. There are, I think we have built, um, with the social worker structure that we have now, the psychologist structure, the counselor structure, I think we have built a, a culture of responsiveness and, um, proactive, uh, activity to deal with kids. I know that Angela told me, um, she gets consultations for risk assessments, um, I don't know, Angela, do you wanna come on up here? Talk about the, the consultations you get from social workers, psychologists, counselors on a weekly basis.
The number?
Uh, the numbers and what it looks like.
So, um, as part of the risk assessment process, the assessors are, one of the, um, the best practices is that they have to do consultations, it's a consultation model, so whenever they're conducting a risk assessment, they consult with another individual and kinda go through the process, did I miss anything? Um, if they can't find anyone, they, they call me as a backup just to get additional support, and so, I am running, averaging about three to five, um, consultations per week, and that takes about twenty minutes per consultation, depending on the situation. And the additional piece of the consultation is that as the risk assessments are conducted, I receive that information, and I also do a, a consultation and assessment for the sites to see if any, if too many risk assessments are coming from that site, do we need to provide additional training, um, to staff, what's, what, what are the trends that are happening? So that's part of that consultation model.
So, but to answer Mrs...
Yeah, to answer your question.
Build on yours. It would be, so, as, as a young person, where do I go and where do I turn? That's gonna be what we're gonna be, one of the things that will be focused on, on the student portion of the trainings and things like that, okay?
Right, so, the, the most important person, that, the most important person in a kid's life is their teachers. Um, and so, training the teachers is, is really crucial. Making sure that the kids know that there are people on that site that are in their corner, that are there for them, um, and that starts with the teachers. And, um, do we have some room to grow in that training? I think so, and I think that's a good thing for us to acknowledge.
I think it's, uh, for me, it's, it's more like, kids don't wanna rat on their friends. They don't wanna, you know, mine, you know, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna say anything, and yet, how do we change that culture that says to be a friend is to care enough to reach out to somebody else? Because that person, that friend may not be capable right now to reach out, so you wanna make sure that people around them are, are putting, wrapping them up, and, and who do they go, who do they go to?
And you're absolutely right, and the science of suicide does just that. It teaches students to be gatekeepers, and there's, it's a live, um, presentation that's done, and it's a, there's a role-play aspect to it, so it goes over all of those different factors that you're addressing. So it teaches them how to be gatekeepers.
Well, and I, and I think it's beyond just, you know, suicide. That's a tragedy, but there are other, you know, kids is expressing stress, I mean, there are other, you know, there's other things that we need to keep, keep telling our kids, speak up for your friends, be a good friend.
Well, and I think that's really where, um, some of this with Challenge Success is gonna come in as well, since they're looking at culture and how are we gonna do this? You know, what we want is a student to feel they can go to any adult on campus. It doesn't have to be a teacher, it doesn't have to be a counselor. If they're stressed and they are close to the custodian, that's why we're training all of seven-twelve staff. So I think that's, that's, you know, you have to kinda keep that in mind, but, um, you know, that's definitely something as we work with that group, is to say, how do we, you know, and we don't wanna just focus on suicide, 'cause that, that is one result, but there are lots of other, um, uh, outcomes for kids in terms of stress and depression and anxiety and all of that, that we wanna focus on as well. So it's, it's looking at all of those things, and it's really working with them to help us, um, figure out how to make students feel safe in saying, you know, I'm, I'm kinda worried about Phil, he just seems really depressed, and, you know...
You have no idea.
Talk to me, friend.
Any more questions? Any more comments, questions? Okay, thank you again. Oh, yes. So I understand we have a student from Newport Harbor High that came in, do you wanna give your report?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Jordan, and tonight I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Newport Harbor High School. Um, most recently at Harbor, we've been undergoing our WASC evaluation, um, which is going pretty well. Um, our boys' basketball team won its first Sunset League title since nineteen-eighty- Um, our boys' basketball team won its first Sunset League title since 1980. Um, one of our science teachers, Mr. Clay, received the NHHS Teacher of the Year Award. And one of our English teachers, Ms. Gaylord, received a grant to fund a special project for her English classes. Um, we will also have Shrek, um, the play on campus in our theater this Thursday and Sunday night. And the cast is from multiple schools like Newport Harbor, Stancia, Enson and other schools. Um, our choir will be flying to New York City this upcoming weekend to perform at Carnegie Hall.
Yes, pretty cool.
Um, our field studies program leaves for Yosemite tomorrow morning. And lastly, our youth and government panel leaves for Sacramento tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, community input.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on, on consent calendar items for non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Each individual speaker has three minutes to cover one or multiple topics and the speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers. With board consent, the, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public's comments depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. In compliance with board policy and the Roll Fan Brown Act, the board is not permitted to take action on non-agenda items. When addressing the board, it's helpful if you state your name and, um, address for the record.
Okay. Britt Doughty.
Good evening, President Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, members of the public. I'm Britt Doughty. I'm president of the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers, 1794. Uh, and so thank you for letting me go first tonight. So, uh, the, uh, first thing I want to do before I forget is I'm asking a 15B3 for the safety plan, if that could be moved to discussion.
Okay.
Uh, so what I wanted to do first is, uh, thank, uh, the Schools Foundation, the Newport Mesa Schools Foundation for an absolutely fabulous awards, uh, evening uh, just a few nights ago. And the foundation, uh, really does, uh, a lot of really neat, uh, ways to help teachers have innovative, uh, ideas to support students in the classroom. And those grants are put to good use and it is much appreciated. Uh, so for, uh, members of the public, we would love for you to support the foundation. There's a lot of different ways to join and we wanted to extend our thanks for another fabulous evening. Uh, one of the other joys, uh, in, in addition to celebrate everyone's achievements, it's just being able to reconnect with colleagues from across the district that maybe you haven't seen in a year or two. And so just seeing, um, our friends, you know, being able to reconnect with somebody they haven't seen in a while is also, uh, a, a really great thing to see. Um, since, uh, since I was last here, also the, the California Federation of Teachers, which is our state affiliate, had their, um, um, uh, committee meetings for state committee meetings. Uh, we have members serving on the retirement policy, special education, uh, educational technology and a labor and climate justice committee. So we have several representatives to, that attend. Um, and the way that the CFT operates is those different committees are specialized and kind of talk about different issues in public education from, uh, early childhood through the university level. Um, and so they have different focus. Um, and then through that process, as they identify pieces and parts, then it goes to our state convention where the state convention kind of votes to ratify recommendations that help guide the union as a whole. Um, and as a reminder, I think I may have mentioned this, that state convention is going to be held just a mile or so from here at, um, here in Costa Mesa. And we want to extend, uh, an invitation for persons who are interested to, to attend. Uh, there is a guest signup policy, so, uh, you need to go contact me and I'll find a way to, to, to get you signed up. Uh, the convention is March 23rd through 25th, uh, so if you're interested, please let me know. So, uh, we're trying to advocate for, for many items through CFT policies that are highly consistent with what the board has as policies uh, and some other pieces, uh, of, of, of things that we do in this district. We're able to take the great ideas of what happened here, try to take them to CFT and, and maybe help, uh, provide some guidance for California. So, um, trying to work to common ends. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, you spoke about the, um, teacher grant dinner. It was really nice that, um, you announced the District Teachers of the Year. That was, brought an element of excitement to the evening. Because we didn't know. Yeah, I, I really liked that. I think everybody did, yeah.
Yes, we did.
Okay, um, Marty O'Meara, Martha O'Meara.
This is her formal system.
My formal name I rarely use.
Right.
Unless I'm making up taxes. Uh, good evening, Dr. Navarro, President Snell and trustees. I am here again to object to your deletion of the school board videos. Um, I will give you an example. Last week I wanted to look up a trustee meeting to see how long the trustees discussed a specific agenda item that they had voted on. In order to do that, I needed to order a video, pick it up at the district office, go to Newport Beach Library and rent a CD, come home with a CD, view the clip, which was less than 10 minutes, then make a return trip to Newport Beach Library to return the CD. That is ridiculous. I thought tonight's mental health issue was very, very good. And it would be a perfect example of how you could use your videos from your trustee board meetings and tell the people, look at this, look what we're doing on our district. And if you have the video, you just put it on your website. This was a perfect example. My requests to resolve this situation have been forwarded to the superintendent's office, which apparently is investigating closed captioning and has no, no timeline for a solution. I have done my own research on the costs. Orange County Department Ed uses the REV services, which I am sure is reliable. And I know this district is aware of the services. They charge $1 a minute. So this meeting tonight would cost you $180. Later in this meeting, I had read on the board thing that you were going to authorize 138 additional dollars in legal services. Yet you appear not willing to spend $180 per meeting to subtitle meetings. For $3,600, you could subtitle the entire school year. For the rest of the year, you could subtitle your meetings. This is not easily providing access for the public to find out what is going on in the school board. Trustees, you represent the people and we're not happy. You need to fix this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, can we investigate that? REV services?
It is one of the groups that we're looking at.
Okay, good. Well, I want to get it back online as well. Because I like to look back as well. Uh, okay, Cynthia Blackwell.
Good evening. I normally don't write myself notes, but I did this time because I don't want to forget anything. And, um, I came tonight because of the topic of what you're, what Phil was talking about. As many of you know, both my nephews committed suicide within 14 months of each other. Um, 2015, 2016, and, um, you, you never see it coming, no matter how much you try or what's going on. You just, you don't. And, um, back in early 2000, when I was a California school, the district brought on this program called PBS, PBIS, EBS. It has a variety of names it goes by. And, um, our school fortunately got very on board with it. We had a very proactive principal, we did the program, we did the counseling part of it, was a huge part of it. And then we did the silent mentoring, which the teachers all took on a child or two or three. Every staff member committed to it. And these are the kids that you just, they never would raise their hand. They were always out by themselves, just kind of the outlier children. And we went out as an adult and connected to them in a, in a way that they were like, oh, who's this? Why is Mrs. Blackwell talking to me? You know, kind of a thing. But, you know, wow. We found out so much about these kids and found so many kids that were in crisis. And it was because the school had a buy-in, the district had a buy-in, and we had counselors on our campus every single day. And these counselors were meeting with these kids. And next thing you know, new principal, that program's out the window. I switched schools, can't find anybody wants to get involved in the program. They start to bring it back before I left a couple of years ago. But the big part missing is the counseling. You need to start with these children when they were young. And I think junior high is good, high school's good. But you really need to get on it and get the counselors back in the, um, grade schools. We had a child, when I was teaching fourth grade, who was already cutting himself. Who did we send this child to? We couldn't help him. I didn't have the experience. And the psychologist we had at the time, she barely was ever there. And if she was there, she had to just do testing. I'm testing, I'm testing, I can't see children. That's a huge issue that we had going on. And it was going on when I left last year. They still had the same issue. These kids are in desperate need of help and they need to have people they can talk to. And then, um, I don't know what the other challenge program is that was meant, that was talked about today. But when my son was at middle, middle, college, high school, they had the challenge day where they came and they did this incredible day with these kids. Because it was in August I was able to do it. And that's something else they could do. You can train the teachers all you want, but if you don't have the resources like counselors to back up the teachers, because we know in our classrooms, we know who needs help. But it doesn't help us if we don't have help to send them to. And I just think that you guys need to really look back to getting counselors back in the ju, in the elementary schools, not some random person, like, once a week. They need to be there all the time. These kids are in deep crisis. And it starts young. Their family lives, some of them are so crazy. Oops, sorry. But, um, okay, I didn't see the first thing, sorry. Anyway, just, I just want to stress, you need to have these programs back in. And I'm glad this topic was up tonight because it is, um, such a hard one to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we've increased our counselors. I didn't know if Phil wanted to speak to that or?
Actually, what, what, I was going to respond during my superintendent's report.
Okay, that's fine.
But, uh, you know, the one thing we've done differently is we now bring in social workers. And social workers specifically trained to address these kind of needs. So, uh, it's not just an academic counselor anymore, it's a social worker. And, uh, Dr. Jokum has, uh.
They can't hear you.
They can't hear you.
Dr. Jokum has increased that, uh, that number of social workers last year um, and continues to look at what our needs are.
And that's, that's different than what it was when we were teachers. Yeah.
PBIS is still in our schools.
PBIS is still?
Yes, uh, it was brought back and it's been a big focus for the district.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Uh, Steve Smith.
Thank you, Mrs. Snell. Good evening, everyone. I have a real easy request, I think, and then a comment on the outstanding student, student services presentation. A few months ago, I raised the very real and documented issue of teen cellphone addiction and I recommended that student services address it. I haven't heard anything, um, so if someone could get back to me just with a real quick follow-up, maybe by the end of the week, I would greatly appreciate it. No, you know, there's no particular rush. Um, Mrs. Flor, you addressed, you, you broached, um, a part of the, um, prevention program that needs to be expanded. So I'm going to take a moment and do that if I may. For every suicide, as we saw the district's numbers, for every suicide, we've got at least 2,000 kids in the district who need help. They need counseling or even deeper, they need therapy. But they're not seeking that help because of the stigma attached. That is documented. There are numerous reputable documented studies, including one by the Rand Corporation, that shows that, that kids and their parents do not seek help because of the stigma attached. Kids are afraid of being ostracized, parents are afraid of having their kids labeled, uh, you know, and actually some of them are afraid that it will prevent them from getting into certain university, college university. So I would encourage you to, um, for, you know, whatever form it takes, address that as well. Um, but other than that, I'm, I, as a, as a resident of this area for 31 years, I'm very proud of the student services program and what you're doing. So, thank you.
Wow, thank you, Steve. Okay, Erica Roberts.
Good evening, members of the board. I'd like to have a moment of silence for the young man we lost, um, in our community. Patrick Turner was a student at CDM. He was loved and he has missed. My family has been having a lot of discussions about what is happening in our community. People are mourning and trying to come to terms with what has happened. Patrick's three letters have gone viral and are heartbreaking for all of us to read. Tomorrow is Valentine's Day, a day to show you care, to show love. Tonight, it seems a perfect opportunity to start talking about how we show care about one another. How do we relieve the stress among our young people and community as a whole? So, thank you, um, for the presentation earlier. Um, we all heard that it starts with the teachers. Caring is not only listening, but also hearing one another. I think we can improve on this. I've heard over and over and see how stressed out our teachers are. How stressed out our kids are in lower grades and especially upper grades. The parents are extremely stressed too. Change is needed. Dr. Navarro, you wrote in your last dot's email that implementing the new material in just one subject is an incredible challenge. Imagine the task of taking on two. K-5 teachers don't have to imagine that because they are living it every day and trying to stay above water. There's real stress in our wonderful teachers and our kids are in the midst of it. Parents are trying to help with what we can and are asking for meetings so we can understand the materials that were selected. Our kids need recognition, love and encouragement. Our teachers need more time to engage with these students. I can assure you, and the research does support, that one real way to help alleviate the stress is to bring down classroom sizes significantly. Right now, in a non-air-conditioned room, a great sixth grade teacher has 36 kids with a new language arts curriculum and is piloting for the second year his fourth math material. He does not complain, but the amount of responsibility on these teachers is enormous. 36 kids, and I'm told there is no limit to classroom size. I believe we have a real opportunity to positively affect the lives of kids and teachers. Please use our tax money and the general fund to make our classrooms smaller. Give teachers more time with each child. Give them the stress reliever that this district promised when they said they would support teachers and we would go slow. If we are truly going to support teachers and kids, then we need to listen to what they have asked for in the last three years and negotiations. Parents all want the classrooms to be positive experience. We need to use our general fund, fund money to employ more counselors on the schools and support staff for the IEPs. And we need smaller classroom sizes to do it. We need to make these adjustments on the budget now and stop paying for things that are unnecessary. Examples of unnecessary lawsuits, bonuses, car allowances, consultants, and huge mistakes being made in projects that are costing hundreds of thousands of dollars. If we can do these things, I believe we will be headed in the right direction. As the district goes into the bargaining and negotiation for teachers and kids and what they need, please listen and hear the voice of the stressed teachers who work with our beloved children. Please make a positive change that we so desperately need so we all can be better than we are now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, that's it. I will pull this. Next is, um, oh, superintendent's report.
So, uh, many good comments made, very accurate about, uh, the pressures in school. Um, and, um, you know, this crisis response team didn't come up, didn't evolve overnight.
Right.
Okay, just like Rome wasn't built in a day, neither was this system. Um, you know, the board had the foresight and the vision, uh, to allow the expansion of the assistant soup, uh, positions. And we actually took, uh, Dr. Jokum's predecessor and promoted her to assistant soup from director and created the new student services division about three years ago. So it even hasn't been around that long. But had the board not had the vision and the support, uh, we wouldn't be where we are today. So, these things take time and they don't just happen overnight. Um, I'm glad to hear, uh, that PBIS, this hasn't been forgotten. It is, uh, something that is part of our solution and part of what we're trying to do. And, and, um, you know, it's about positive, enforcing positive behaviors. Too often, we tend, maybe sometimes, to focus on negative behaviors and correcting negative behaviors. Um, for a student who's at risk, that doesn't work. You know, so it's much better to go through the positive and teach kids how to behave rather than reprimanding into compliance. Um, I think it's, uh, also, um, important to recognize that, uh, you've allowed us to invest. And some of that direction has come from the involvement of board members on committees like our SARB committee, where you sit and you listen to our most, uh, vulnerable students uh, that are in our district. And you, and we learn that it's not because it's the students' fault. They are in terrible living conditions that contribute to this. Um, no one ever knows why a child chooses to go down, or, or why a child becomes depressed. But we do know that as schools. But we do know that, as schools, there are contributing factors. Some that we're responsible for, that we have to alleviate and learn about. Some that are amongst peers. And then some that are community pressures. So, that's the purpose of going to the outside, and going to a reputable group called Challenge Success with a proven track record of addressing these cultural issues. That didn't happen overnight either. There was a lot of research and homework done to identify which group would have, has the tools to come in and support the ongoing development and growth of our, of our, of our school cultures. But again, none of this would have happened had the board not supported and had the vision to help build the Student Services. It allowed us to bring in Dr. DiAgostino, who has made an incredible impact, had an incredible impact, even on just truancy. If you look at the first couple of years, just what he did with truancy and how he knocked down those numbers, that was impressive. And, you know, it's kind of like, he said to me, "What am I supposed to do next?" It was a, it was a huge accomplishment.
Nobody knows.
But, we, he continues to move forward. He continues to march, and he has the full support of his division, as well as the ed division and the business division. And, you know, the last thing is, it takes a while to build the right team. And Dr. Jokum and Dr. DiAgostino went through a thorough vetting process to find Mrs. Castellanos. And she is nationally recognized and a state trainer in this very area. So, you have a real expert who has made a significant difference. But again, none of this would have happened if, four years ago, you wouldn't have allowed us to move in this direction and to make this difference, just like you allowed me to resurrect the College and Career Office four years ago. And we were presented on Wednesday of last week, was it Wednesday last week? Yes, Wednesday last week, to the parent advisory about the CTE program. And you heard from CDM, it was very, very nice that, the one cheer that happened was that CDM saw their name up on the Project Lead the Way list, and the parents from the zone cheered, because they've been asking for something like this. So, again, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your insight, and thank you for allowing us to really build a strong program. It takes time, but it's not for lack of effort or lack of urgency. And we look forward to our collaboration with Challenge Success. They are, and you've seen their website, they bring incredible tools to the table and will address many of the issues that were brought up here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so just the public, Google it, and look at their website. Okay, we're going to go on to consent calendar, and I do want to pull 15B3 to discussion.
All items listed in the consent calendar are considered by the board to be routine and be enacted by the board in one motion. This includes the consent calendars for business, education, services, human resources, and student support services and superintendent. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes on the motion.
Move approval of the consent, with the exception of 15B2. Second. Did you say three? I couldn't, I can't hear.
Was it two or three?
It's three.
Oh, three. Sorry, I said, I did say two.
I'll go ahead, yeah, okay.
Second.
Any discussion, any questions, any? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, not in favor? Okay, discussion, action. Dr. Navarro?
Okay. So, we have ballots. Let me find my ballot. Okay. All right. So, you have a ballot before you for delegate assembly, and we are voting for no more than eight candidates, okay? And I would like to allow the board some time to have a discussion prior to making the nomination. So, I would act the ask of past, passed CSBA president to please lead us in this discussion. Florrie?
Yes. This is a first for me in a long time, that Mrs. Franco is now standing for reelection. So, this is, provides us a wonderful opportunity, but also, kind of sad that we'll miss you.
I am, too, but it's time.
The California School Boards Association has a governing body that's comprised of about 256 delegates from around the state, representing all the school districts that are members. And each year, they're charged with selecting the leadership of the organization. There was some confusion, to be real frank, on this ballot, because with Mrs. Franco not running, it was presumed that there would be an open seat on, on the ballot, and that we would be voting for eight candidates, but one of those would be an open seat. Apparently, what has occurred on this ballot is that one of the individuals, Sharon Wallen from Irvine Unified School District, is currently an appointed position, because within the organization, school districts that have over 35,000 are allowed one appointed seat. Larger districts than that get two appointed seats. And Irvine has now reached that threshold where they have an appointed seat. She has decided to not just stand down from the appointed position and run for the position, which will cause them to have a vacancy in the appointed position, which will be filled by another one of their board members. So, instead of having just two traditionally, they will now be afforded three positions. So, with that, it is, and I love her dearly, but with that concept, it really, in my opinion, is not really fair. So, for that very reason, I'm going to make the following recommendation, that we vote for Dana Black, Lauren Brooks, Lynn Davis, Cindy Kern, Rosemary Saylor, Michael Simons, Francine Sinto, and our own Charlene Metoyer.
Second. I can second it now, because I'm not on the ballot.
After how many years?
After 20, 20, 28 years.
Madam President, will you call for the vote?
Okay. Okay, yes, I'll call for the vote.
All in favor.
All those in favor? All in favor, I don't know.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, so those are, do I need to repeat them? Okay, you've got them.
We've got them. Oh, okay, so that's our eight. Very good.
I'm sorry, I was thinking of my question, but you, you answered my question, so I didn't need to ask it.
Yeah.
I was processing it. Okay.
It was not cool.
Yeah. No, not cool. Okay, so now we're at the pulled consent item. 15B3, and Britt Doughty would like to speak to that.
Perhaps we could have a discussion about it, a presentation first. We have Vanessa Galey in the back.
Okay.
Regarding the school safety plans, Mr. Lee Sung? Some background on this?
Annually, we need to update our comprehensive safe school plans. It's quite a lengthy process behind the scenes, so when these become available to present to the board for approval, I just want you to know, there's a lot of work behind the scenes with multiple divisions, as well at every school site and their school site councils. This year, we went through a pretty significant revision to the template that we get from the county, and we bit the bullet to just go ahead and do that this year. We had a support meeting with all the principals to make those changes, and they went back to their school site councils to get them all approved for you this evening. So, we're very proud of the work that we're going to do. And just a little preview, that we intend to change our timeline, even though the statutory deadline is March 1st, which we're ahead of that. We want to do this earlier in the school year. We feel that makes more sense. So, we're going to move up our timeline, so that we'll have this to you in the fall, rather than mid-year.
Perhaps Ms. Galey can tell us what the makeup of a school site council is and what their responsibilities are?
What about the school safety plans? Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, members of the public. School site councils are elected on either an annual basis or an every-other-year basis, and they really are dictated by bylaws. And so, there is some flexibility in the makeup of a school site council. But essentially, the big idea behind a school site council is that it's 50% in-school representatives and 50% out-of-school representatives. So, some of them, you would consider the employees, and then the other ones are students or parents at the secondary level, or parent community at the elementary level. So, really, what the, the idea is parity between inside and outside of the school representation. And the other idea on the in-school or the employee side is that there's always a majority of teachers. So, each year, when the schools are putting together their school site councils, they submit the representation, and we make sure that they have the correct numbers, that it's an even number of folks on there, and that also that we have the right constitution. So, their role is really in approving the safety plan. They can delegate to a safety committee to put the pieces together, but we do require that school site council approval, and that's recorded in their safety plans. Other questions?
I think for the public, I think for the public, they need to know what, what is a school safety plan?
Oh, I was waiting for you to ask.
Just, just a minor.
Yes, absolutely. So, we are really proud of the revision we did this year. We have two parts to our safety plans. And really, in years past, we didn't draw attention to the fact that there are two large components drawn together. And so, we've renamed the plan, the Comprehensive School Safety Plan, Part 1 and Part 2. Part 1 is about policies and planning, and Part 2 is about the emergency procedures. Most people think about emergency procedures, the things that you do in a fire, in an earthquake, in tsunami, in the case of Newport L. And so, there's all of those components that are planned for, as well as triage teams and reunion gates. But there's another aspect of safety planning, and that's something that I was really able to partner with Sarah's folks and Phil in looking at some of our policies and procedures around bullying, around child abuse reporting and prevention, and trying to make sure that all of our staff is on the same page about what our processes are, what our requirements are, and that we're annually reminding ourselves. Because school safety is about an environment. It's about kids feeling connected. It's about looking at our data, identifying where on campus or in what instances kids are not feeling safe, perhaps there's some crime. So, really going through a data-driven analysis of what's going well, what needs to be improved, how can we improve on our people and our programs, as well as how can we be looking at safe ingress and egress, Section H? So, we're just really thrilled that we've pulled it all together in a way that we think makes a lot of sense. And even though the documents are very comprehensive, the principals were able to go through a process to review and remind their faculty of the things that we expect of them and that we support them in. And as Mr. Lee Sung said, we are adjusting the timeline, so that now that we've done this work, the heavy lifting, we can do a revision before June 30th, just to get the, most of the revisions done. And then after we come back from the summer, they'll be able to, again, review data, consult with their stakeholders, and our new timeline is by October 1st. Everything will be finished and ready to go.
I do like the idea that you're going to do it October 1st, because staff changes during the summer, not significantly, we have a lot of stability in Newport Mesa, but new staff needs to be brought on board. Strengths need to be identified. I know that at our site, it was, "Do you want to be on first aid? No, please, I'd rather be at reunion. Don't put me anywhere near there, someplace where there might be blood." It was that kind of discussion that went on, and that needs to be revised, and it does need to be looked at early. So, you can't do it when you're changing the template, but boy, that'll, that'll be helpful to a site, too.
Yeah. We really think this will give us that great impetus, as we're doing the back-to-school activities, that we can have those refreshers and reminders. And then also, we're lucky, lucky, because it's a California Healthy Kids Administration year, so we'll be able to look at the results after we get them in the summertime and incorporate those into our planning.
Perfect. And it also makes the site aware before back-to-school nights, so that can be incorporated in any classroom talk, should a teacher want, a question come before the teacher. Good planning.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay.
Thanks.
Now, Brett?
So, good evening again, President Elsie, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, Britt Doughty, again. So, the comments that I had were, first, thank you for that explanation, because that's very helpful. That's consistent with what, what I knew about the plan, and I appreciate that the public is more aware of it. And I think that what I'm asking, or, is that we, as we go through this process, again, we, it's always a great time to be reflective and think of, how can we roll in the emotional support pieces that the district really is doing a strong job on, and how do we weave that into the safety plan? Because I know it's part of it, but is it a formalized part of it? And we're bringing a lot more resources on board, and it's a newer piece, and as Dr. Navarro said, it takes time to kind of, kind of get everything caught up. So, that could be a consideration. Also, what I think that we, an area that we might want to consider at school sites is how we make sure that everyone is aware of the plan and kind of the details of the plan. As Ms. Metoyer mentioned, you know, you do have new staff that come on board each year. And some time ago, I know the district invested heavily in doing a major crisis response training for all staff. It's been a number of years since then. So, you know, what are the times that it's appropriate to do a detailed, in-person, question-and-answer type safety training versus, you know, just kind of quick refreshers and, and kind of those frequencies? And I think those are things for us to reflect upon. And it doesn't have to be as big as what we did then, but at least just at the school site. Let's spend, you know, a solid hour on this, as opposed to a quick 20-minute update, and trying to make sure that we, we make sure that everyone is aware of it. And also, thinking in terms of staff who are not there every day. There are a lot of part-time employees, both classified and certificated. We have substitute teachers who are on staff, and so, how do we loop them in and make sure that they're aware of the resources we have? And then also, another component that we may want to consider is, as employees, parts of our safety. Parts of our, if we're dealing with a community member who maybe is agitated, and how do we kind of deal with that? How do we respond in an appropriate manner? How do we provide for different elements to that, which maybe we don't often think about in terms of the school safety plan, but it is part of the whole community there? And so, that's another area of reflection. And I know that we've had some of those discussions as employee groups with the HR department and, you know, that we've brought up, that we're working through, but it might be part of a comprehensive plan, not sure. Just some thinking points for us as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So, do we, when the individual, I guess this is for Jessica, when the individual safety plans... Vanessa, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You look like a Jessica.
I'm presenting Jessica.
Okay, there you go. Vanessa. When the individual plans are done, there are teachers or staff on that, and provide input. But there is a framework probably given to everyone. So, I think some of these ideas are great. So, maybe you could meet and talk about putting these, these issues. Talk about whether these issues should be in and how that we can, what that would look like.
Absolutely. I think we're always open to input.
That would be great. Okay. Ms. Metoyer?
And mine was probably for Mrs. Olson, so you're saved. You actually have a little more steps in to go back and forth. Is safety part of the substitute orientation? And if it's not part of the big, whole picture of that, perhaps administration could be directed to the, or have a template that says, here's a, when you have, when you leave subplans, it's breathe in, breathe out, you know, subplans, whether it be for kindergarten or 12th grade AP physics. It's, here's what you have to do today, so that I come back and the students are still safe, ready, and learning. And perhaps that could be included in that packet, where it says, you know, in case of an emergency, at the very least, you contact this teacher who's next door, who will let you know what your role is, or my role is this, if you're uncomfortable with that, please let the principal know. Something along those lines, that we could think about that for subs, since I've been a sub, and it's really special when something happens and you don't know exactly, but you come off like you do, so.
I can't really speak to what every site does in terms of subs.
Exactly.
I would hope that they do have information for the substitute as they arrive. What we do do during substitute orienta- What we do do during substitute orientation, though, is we do spend some time on how to be successful. And part of that is addressing, what do you do if you have a concern? Where do you go? Who can you reach out to? What are methods of reaching out to them? And including, when you get there, look for the emergency plan. So we do cover that in the orientation at this point.
Thank you.
Mrs. Black. You answered actually all my questions, except for how often do the subs, are they trained before they can sub in our district?
Yes, with our substitutes, all substitutes have to go through an orientation. And over the last couple of years, we've added about an hour and a half, almost two hours, of orientation in terms of the work itself, not just processing. And that's where we include it.
Thank you.
I want to let you know that most of your schools, this is something the secretaries at the schools do really, really well, and why they get a little flustered when they get a late call on a sub, is they spend the day before preparing all the subfolders that have all of this information in it. So the class, the attendance, as well as the emergency plan that the subs need to know about, for each room that they have it in. And so they really try to personalize it as much as possible. I remember Caroline did a great job with our subs. And so she was always a little flustered when she'd get a call at 7:55, you know, and class was starting in five minutes because she'd have to put another subfolder together.
Yeah, well, I know as a parent, when I was on site council, I knew what the safety plan was. But before that, I didn't even know they had that. So I think that's, there's, and part of this outreach and letting everyone know, it'd be nice if we sent something out and said, and maybe we do, but that we send something out that say, it's now, we just approved it. It's on the website, if you want to go look at it and read it.
It's not on the website. They would have to go to each school to see it.
School website, I mean.
No, they'd have to go to the school office to see it.
Oh, it's, why, how come it's not on the website?
We don't put it on the website.
Oh, because we don't want people to, why?
Yeah, to know our...
There are certain parts that even a principal won't share with someone who looks at it because there are certain things that we want to keep private.
In case of an intruder, how do you?
Well, that makes sense why I didn't know about it then.
But anyone from the public can go to the school site and look at the safety plan.
Okay, so we could put something out that it's been approved and it is for viewing on, okay. Okay, good discussion.
Just a kind of closing thought of mine. We, you remember when our PTAs helped facilitate the earthquake, you know, supplies and stuff? So I'm really dating myself quite a bit now. But one of the things that was so great and what came out of our PTA input at our elementary school was parents just assume we've got it all together. And because of the news and whatnot, parents are just going to rush to the school. And so one of the things that we did before, and PTA helped us with that, like I said, along, probably 10, 12 years ago, it was in the parent handbook. You know, it was something physical that they got. In case of emergency, you know, this is what our protocols are, you know? And that, you know, it's not helpful if you rush in, and a lot of parents will just come right in.
Oh, they'll do it even with a handbook.
Right, and, well, even then, even if they don't know. But I think it's good that, you know, part of our emergency plan would be to, you know, if it's not on our website, what to do in an emergency. That's when they're reading, that's the only chance that we get them to actually possibly read the 50,000 pieces of paper in our parent handbook. But I know at D-LAC meeting, they, you know, they did talk about, you know, where to go, where to get the information, and parents were really appreciative of that because they didn't know. I mean, they made a big assumption, you know, about what they would do or not do, so.
Yeah, and there are things you can share that would help.
Are they, are they still hard copy? Because I remember that we were switching over to electronic handbooks, and it may be site-specific, but I want to think that we always had 10, or we gave them all to kindergarten and then updated them online. It was in a transitional process.
I would think they'd have to have both of them.
I believe it's both. We do have hard copies, and of course, it's digitally available as well.
Yeah, because I don't think we can assume that everybody's going to go online and check it out. I mean, we, as much as we want them to do that, I think it's more important, you know?
One thing that is digital, and this happened several years back, is that the police departments have our school buildings on digital.
Oh, yes, they do.
So that in case they ever have to come in, and they know where to go and what rooms are where and what closets are where.
If you dial, if you dial 911 from a classroom, the fire department or dispatch knows what room you are and what school that 911 came from. That's awesome.
It is, it's great.
Thank you.
Okay, any more comments?
I move that we approve item 15B3, Comprehensive School Safety Plans.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, board member reports. I'm going to start with Ms. Black. Well, I am really sad to have missed our dinner, but we were, this one thing I appreciate so much about our board is that we all take our turns and do things. But it was actually quite delightful to go to D-LAC, and we moved it up because of our President's Week. And I hate to say Ski Week, but...
Because most people don't ski.
Most people don't ski, right. It was amazing. And so I would also like to send kudos out to Vanessa Galey and her staff. Amazing, amazing presentation. And also to our D-LAC parents. Normally, there was something else going on that night, so they were, you know, because we moved up the week. So, but we still had over 35 people there. And they were, broke up into groups, and they worked on the LCFF questionnaire. And so we actually, I got to head up a table that was a translation table from Spanish to English. And we actually had parents there that needed the translation. And we had a couple of parents from the Corona del Mar side, and they are learning Spanish so they can participate in D-LAC.
More effectively.
You know, more effectively. But there, you know, it was really very positive. The other thing that happened that, you know, was amazing, and we got a lot of feedback, so I'm really, you know, anxious to hear, you know, all the data that we collected from the parents. And they were very forthcoming, very genuine, sincere. When we also had the Dr. D Show, Dr. D Agostino did an amazing presentation on the marijuana issue and drugs. And the parents were, again, just so grateful for that. Had really amazing questions and input. And I promised this one father that I would mention this, and I think it's an amazing job, and I'm sure it's on Phil's radar as well. But he said, you know, we go to such great lengths. Both the mother and, you know, two parents put this out and said, you know, we allow this music that we're not sure what they're saying, rap music and whatnot. We allow all this type of, you know, negative, you know, music and celebration, you know, gaming and whatnot that, you know, that isn't necessarily positive in sending a good message into our own households. And so she was, she was kind of saying, if you don't like that, it's, you know, to, you know, put your foot down. It's your home, and, you know, and those are the rules and whatnot. And then this dad chimed in and said, yeah, well, we're, we see the alcohol and the, you know, great fun, you know, commercials out there. And he said, you know, I think it would go a long way if we were to, you know, spend the money, come together as a community, the different entities, and talk about, you know, being sober, you know, and how great it is. And so then I had to chime in with project-based learning because, you know, that's my only goal in being on a school board, is to get that into our schools. Because I really do think there's something, it's so positive. It gives, you know, an opportunity to every child that maybe doesn't feel like they belong. But there's more choices for a student and for teachers for that matter. We have so many teachers now that have signed up, you know, for engineering. And I mean, it's just amazing because they're getting bitten by it. But it's the relevance of education, you know? Why is it relevant? Why do I need to be here? And the worst thing, and I swore and I never said it, and I'm sure my kids will differ with me, but because I said so isn't an answer, at least not in my household. And so I think, you know, they deserve it, and, you know, our students deserve to understand why it is. And I think that father really had something to share with the community. And he was wonderful. I thought he was very articulate and a little nervous, but he was willing to step up and help support our district. So I said, well, I'll work on getting another committee together. But I think that we, even our own students who, you know, the digital media arts and, you know, the business marketing, you know, we have, you know, we have the own tal, our own talent. And then I'm sure, you know, our students would be willing to share that, you know, with the district, so.
We, I just saw a tweet today on supporting computer science curriculum.
Yeah, don't get me started.
But we're already, we've gotten a head start on that already because we're exploring, you know, coding in our classes. And technology, you know, practical learning isn't what it was when I was in school.
Right.
But we still need to do that. And having experiential, as a former science teacher where we did experiments, that's what made education come alive and make it relevant. It's like, oh, I can see that if I learn this, it's going to lead to that. And so, yeah, it's very...
Hence conceptual math. As scary as it is, and nobody likes it, and I know it's a sore subject with some, we weren't taught that in California. And so just think of how we would all have approached math, you know? Even our math majors and teachers out there, if we would have, at a very early age, which we're doing now, where, you know, to understand the concepts of math, and it's not just memorizing a formula without understanding, you know, the concept of why math is so important. And we live and breathe it every day. We're always, every day, solving for x. So for, you know, and so that's why Charlene is on my team.
And math facts, just for those of us that say, oh, my gosh, they still have to learn their time. Yes, they do. Kids still have to learn their math facts. They need to know the time tables, and you still have to do that. And when parents say, there's no homework, I'm thinking, good grief, get out the flashcards. It helps the kids because that is still part of the curriculum.
That's right.
It's just, it's, it's, it's...
And teachers are still teaching it.
Learning your ABCs is still part of reading, and sounding, letter sounds are part of reading. So our math fact's part of all of this experiential, integrated math, so.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Franco?
I attended the meeting of the Orange County School Reorganization Committee meeting last Wednesday. I'm trying to remember my dates now. And it was exceedingly interesting for two and a half hours. There were quite a few people who gave testimony either in favor of Map B or Map G. The committee voted with one dissenting vote to approve Map G and send it on to the state level. On Thursday, it was my pleasure to attend the Newport Mesa Schools Foundation Awards, Teacher Awards banquet, which was, as everyone has said before, Ed Britt said, "It is a time of celebration of teachers. It's a time when teachers write innovative, creative programs that are funded through grants." And it lasted quite a while, but we still managed to get through it. And it was very good, Brett, to have the Teacher of the Year by school site and then the selection of the two to move forward to Orange County. I don't believe we've done the selection of the two to move on before at that dinner. So, and then Sunday, it was also fun to attend the accreditation meet and greet, WASC team from Newport, at Newport Harbor High School. Lots of people there, lots of department chairs, parents, D-LAC committee, not D-LAC, ELAC committee members from Newport Harbor, parents from the foundation, parents from PTA who are meeting with this group to give, to create the, to evaluate, if you will, the culture of Newport Harbor. And I think it will be very positive, I hope, because this is a school that I've been involved with since 1974. And it has changed with the times. And so my hope is that it also gets a six-year accreditation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Davenport?
Just kudos to the Newport Mesa Schools Foundation for all they do to facilitate teachers' progress and furthering the education they're able to give their students.
And kudos to Sally Davenport, who organized the dinner. It was wonderful. It's a lot of work.
Yeah, it is.
Ms. Floor.
Well, unfortunately, I missed the dinner. I was the guest of the Orange County Business Council and got to hear from the Shark Tank, Brian Hurchiverich, who's one of the Sharks on Shark Tank. It was quite interesting. And they do an outstanding job. And Alma Harris happens to sit on that board, so that's kind of cool. But here, we've got lots of things going on. I had the pleasure of participating with the Arts Commission, and we had two wonderful presentations. One from Wilson School, their orchestra that started tiny and now it is quite large. And they were marvelous. And then the Costa Mesa High School Dance Team. And it was really an opportunity organized by, we have two meetings a year. This was organized to meet with our partners in the arts community. And so we heard from the William Lyon Museum, who sends and provides kids opportunities to go out there. And it's more about history, but they're also very interested in partnering with us and looking at the high schools, not just in history, but in aviation and the science of aviation. So that was one of the partners, Segregstrom Center for the Arts, of course, the Costa Mesa Arts Commission. So that was, that was wonderful. And of course, you know, it's always dangerous when you put two board members together. And so Shar was also there. And we were just sort of chit-chatting at lunch. Fabulous place to eat lunch, for any of you that want to know. They have a little café at the Arts and Dance Conservatory that's called Monkey Business. Fabulous food, very reasonable, and all the money that they raise goes to support the homeless. So it's fabulous. But we were just talking about the unused space on these two screens before the board meetings. And we had the opportunity to watch several different activities, loops of kids' performances and things throughout the school. So we thought, well, why not entertain? Board meetings are not supposed to be entertaining, but we could entertain by just putting them on a loop before the board meeting. So people could sit here and watch fabulous, you know, our kids doing all sorts of different things. And, you know, teachers could submit what they're doing and put them up there.
Ryan, run the DVD.
Matthew's not here.
Matthew was there, he was there. So that was just a small suggestion that two board members came up with. Also, I do want to request that CSBA has sent out a resolution calling for full funding of education by 2020. That's a lofty goal. So I would like to request that we get that on the agenda for our next meeting so we can send it up to CSBA to present to the governor.
Ms. Floor, it's only $1,900 per student. So that's what we need to fully fund.
Well, we're going for the whole state. I'm really concerned about the federal government, so we're going to be starting to, I'll start, start sending out things because they've actually cut all the funding. President Trump has cut all the funding for arts, public television broadcasting, which in some communities is where our kids first get some information, exposure to academics. I also attended the WASC. And then I had the wonderful opportunity to participate last night with CSCEA. Their Leadership Development Group was meeting, and Dr. Navarro and I were able to have a great conversation with them about school board governance, what it means, explain what the Ralph M. Brown Act is, talk about some of our policies of how we've, as a result of some of the issues that we've, that have occurred, how we are addressing those through policies, because that's what the board does. It doesn't do the how, it says the what. And we tell our staff the what, you know, what we want, and it's up to staff to get it implemented. And if it doesn't, we have to have an explanation of why. Also, in light of the fact that now we are going to the state for our... Also, uh, in light of the fact that now we are going to the state for our new election trustees, I think that we should be starting to publicize or start holding informational meetings about school board ma- um, school board member, uh, elections. So, that we should start scheduling, uh, for the community, what it is about, what, what does school boards, what does it mean to be a governing trustee? Very similar to what we learn in Masters in Governance, but a sort of a small down version. But just so, for those of people that might be interested in running for school board, because it'll be a different, it'll be a different type of election, because they'll be running it trustee. So, they'll, they'll need to have a little bit more, not just about, well, you're gonna be representing this group, but also, you can't forget about the whole. So, I think that, that would be really important, that we start do- doing that. I wanna thank Stu News. There was a great article about the Spirit Run, if you didn't read it. But it also highlighted Karen Yelsey, who this year will be participating with her grandson in the Spirit.
Oh, wow.
So, it was, uh, had great pictures of her, her little kids running and, and her. So, um, it was, it was great. Also, um, piggybacking on what, and I just lost the name. Vicky.
Oh, Vicky.
Years ago, we had, we had on a, on a Saturday, a parent university, in which we had a number of classes. It was held at Newport Harbor High School. There were classes offered for parents, um, not just because we've have, we've done that currently for our, our English language learner families. This was for every parent. And parents could choose three or four different sessions. It was all, all, it was on a Saturday, and I think there was on Sunday, and you could take workshops.
Like a parent conference.
It was wonderful. And something like this would be, I think, maybe we should start partnering with the PTA and start looking at, maybe bringing that, that concept on. Can, you know, has a whole host of different, from going, you know, applying for college, FASA, you know, grades, whatever it is, mental health. I think that this would, might be something that we should, um, to take a look at. And finally, um, just because I have a kid in it, and I know that the new law changed that has now allows CIF to have competitive cheer. So, um, and we just had Cori income, and she was in a competition. It's not cheerleading at a high school football game. It is competitive cheer. There's a lot more stunts, there's a lot more gymnastics. It's quite, uh, quite, and then now the CIF has said that you can have competitive cheer as well as traditional cheer programs at school. And so, one of the issues becomes, in terms of parity with other CIF sports. Uniforms, travel, et cetera. And I know that there are, some schools have elected not to do competitive, uh, cheer, while some have. And so, I would just like to have a question about, um, starting to look and start review and start asking whether we've got schools. We know that Costa Mesa is a, has competitive cheer, so they have both. So, I think we need to have, we need to have some conversations about, um, policies and sort of start, start taking a look at that. Because it can get, uh, quite expensive. And then, of course, it's gonna be in competition with all of the cheer, private cheer places that are all around. And then, um, I, finally, there were a couple of questions about the, the closed captioning, and I'm hoping that maybe we can get that on our websites, all our websites, as to, as to the rationale and the reason why, uh, we are not, we are still taping, but there is a reason for this. And I have a question, and perhaps, um, Annette, my brain, could answer it. Are all governmental agencies going to be required to do the closed captioning? And if they are not doing it now, are they out of compliance?
I will let you know, she's making her way up, that, uh, the Office of Civil Rights, Federal Office of Civil Rights, has, is in its information section, that has three hundred and fifty districts under, uh, investigation for not having their-
In California?
No, across the nation.
Ah, across the nation. But not us.
Hi, good evening, um, Presidents Snell, members of the board, cabinet and guests. It is a requirement to have all content that is hosted on websites be ADA accessible. They all have to follow the ADA laws. So, every piece of information that we have on our websites has to be ADA compliant. Videos is just one of very many components to that. So, can't speak for other districts, but if they're not compliant, that's because they're not following the law. So, we are all required to follow that.
How about city, how about city hall, uh, city councils?
I believe the law is any agency that receives federal funds.
Okay.
And I don't-
And we do have it on our, our web page does say why we, what the, that we have DVDs available to be, to be borrowed.
So, anything specific to board videos should be directed to Sherri in the Superintendent's Office. Website accessibility in general, at the bottom of every single one of our websites is non-discrimination statement, uniform complaint. And then, we also are being even, as, as much proactive as we possibly can. We created a webpage specifically dedicated to website accessibility, um, on our websites. So, again, we took the direction of other districts that have received Office of Civil Rights complaints. We have not. Orange County Department of Ed, and just the fact that it's a law and we have to follow it. So, we're actually very ahead of the curve on this compared to other school districts. We aren't ahead of the curve as far as meeting the law in its entirety as of right now. That's why we have this page, so anyone that finds any ADA errors on here can let us know. But it is a law, and if you're not ADA compliant on your websites, they're in violation of it. So, however they wanna handle it or ignore it, it's up to them.
So, if a school district, and I believe the Orange County Department of Ed falls into this, they are not televised, are they?
So, we actually, our office has been in multiple email exchanges with some of the community members that have, um, voiced concerns here before you regarding this issue. And I don't know the numbers, I don't have the email in front of me. But Matthew Jennings in my office has been amazingly championing this project. And he reviewed nearby school districts, and I don't know the numbers, but most of them don't even offer videotaping.
Yeah, they don't, they're not on-
So, some school districts, they're local cities, show, uh, the board, the school board meetings. Some of them just provide written transcript of it. Some of them don't provide anything other than come in and we'll give you a, a transcript of the board meeting. So, we are one of very few districts that would offer video hosting on the websites. And I believe there are still some that offer that service on their website now, and they're not closed captioned, so they're violating the laws. But again, I wanna en- assure you that we're doing what we need to be doing to ensure that we're compliant, regardless of other school districts not being on board with the law.
Annette, and there's translations that have to be done in closed caption as well, right?
Translations?
Yeah, like in Spanish?
Um, so, i- it depends. So, just my department, anything that's on the website needs to be ADA accessible. So, all of the content. If we're specifically talking about videos, if somebody comes up here and talks in Spanish, yes, the video needs to say, "Oh, Annette Franco was talking about ADA compliance on our website." And then, if I happen to talk to you in Spanish, "Hola buenas noches, quiero hablar con ustedes de tal cosa", then it needs to say, "Oh, Annette said quiero, buenas tardes, quiero hablar with you." You know, so, yes, if someone's speaking in Spanish, we do need to translate that and transcribe that in Spanish.
Ooh.
And it has, and it-
It has instantaneous.
It has to be.
It stays instantaneous.
It's directly quoted, whatever it is.
Well, it's a video. So, whatever is said in the video, if we're hosting the video on, on our website, it has it automatically. So, right, right now on our homepage, I pointed to this, I think it was the last meeting or the one before that, we do have a, a video that's hosted on our homepage, and it does have closed captioning on there. So, if you click it, there's a little closed captioning button, and everything that is verbally said in that video is also written out, just like you do if you watch the news when you're at the gym. Everything's closed captioned. So, that's what we're required to do for all videos.
And even the service that was mentioned by Ms. Omara, uh, that is a forty-eight hour turnaround. It's not instantaneous. It's not instantaneous. So, we wouldn't be able to load it until it was completely done.
And instantaneous causes some issues also, 'cause if you are at the gym watching the news, sometimes you go, "What? That couldn't possibly be what they just said." So, we wanna make sure that what we say is quoted correctly.
And you're held to a higher standard than the news or the sports stations.
Yes, we are. We have, we have to be honest.
Like the example I gave last time, if you wanna right this ship.
Yes, yes.
There you go.
So, again, I, I know there's a lot of attention on the board videos, because we have been providing board videos on our website to our community, which is amazing that we do that. But there's so much more to website accessibility than just videos. And we're doing a great job of getting there. And that's why we have that page dedicated to website accessibility, because we don't have it all figured out just yet. So, if you do see something that's not compliant on our websites, let us know. We'll fix it, remove it, or do whatever it is we need to do to ensure that we stay ahead of this.
Okay. And then, I, I just have a, just another question that you, if we could get a report. I know that there were some comments regarding, um, large class sizes. And could we have, uh, and we, we know that we get a report every, but now is coming the time when we're having kindergarten roundups. There's, they're gonna be starting, we're gonna be starting. And just what the policy is in terms of how we load our cla- how we load our classes and at the site level, the discretion that the, the school site has in terms of whether they, you know, 'cause I know that, um, I'm, I'm aware of what happened at, at Mariners, for example, because there was a teacher that requested to move down, and they were going to bring another teacher up into the, up into the sixth grade. And the, the, the existing sixth grade teacher said, "No, we would rather just keep the three of us." And so, consequently, they have large class sizes. But I would just like to have some discussion or just a presentation about how you guys go about loading class size. I mean, I know that Paul used to do, you know, give us every once in a while, uh, you know, "Here's what you do."
We, we can give, we can give you an analysis of how we compare to other districts.
That'd be great.
But I think what's important to remember is that, uh, unlike, uh, a six-pack of soda, kids don't come in, in packs of twenty-four, or packs of twenty. You know, and so, every school has a bubble, okay? Now, it might be a bubble of small numbers, or it might be a bubble of big numbers. And often, as in, uh, the example you've given, the consideration is to keep the classes at the primary grades lower, if you can. Sometimes you can't. Sometimes you do have twenty-four in a kindergarten class or twenty-five. But, you know, those are, but if you look across, uh, the, the whole school, they're pretty good. But, and, and Kurt Sur deals with the elementary, and he's explained it to me many times. Kirk and Russell and I have dealt with secondary, and I can tell you that, that's, uh, that's some, even a bigger puzzle. But, uh, oftentimes, because you have bigger faculties, you can even it out more. And you can't always do that, especially in a small elementary school.
Oh, in a small elementary school, it's so difficult. And I know that, for me, as a teacher and as a principal, we ended up with big class sizes usually, it was because I would rather have a few more kids than have a combo. And that's usually when a large class size happens. And that resulted from the criteria for allot, for the staffing allotments. And it, I can't tell you how many times I begged, "But if you give me one teacher, I will have no combos." And if you don't give me that teacher, I will have four combos because of the way the kids are ordered. And sometimes it worked, and sometimes it didn't. Sometimes I had, we had lots of combos. And that was because my school at the time was very small.
Yeah.
And I don't care, Sherri, that's what, that's what really happened.
Um, and then I would be very remiss not to say, um, there were two classified individuals from Pomona School, um, last night, and we were speaking about the policy of distributing the Chromebooks. And both of them were just glowing, um, with the response of the kids with these, the Chromebooks and having the ability to have the Chrome- I was talking about the policy and why we went, um, distributed, because we have kids six hours a day. And, and that's, we wanted to make sure that we got them into the hands before we had Wi-Fi. We wanted to make sure. And these two said, "Please tell the board that our kids are just, their self-esteem, their, their ability to manage their work, they're doing their homework." And what was amazing was when they were first handed out, and they were given, and they said, "This is yours. You can decorate it, you can put things on it, you can do whatever." And they said, "Really? It's mine? You have it for four years. You can take it home." They were just unbelievable. They've only had two incidents where they, the kids have lost the chargers.
Ah.
Not the comp- not the Chromebooks, the chargers. I said, "We can get those replaced."
That's easy. But I just wanted to-
I want a charger for my own stuff.
Good. Are you, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
I did lots of that- I did lots of that stuff, so that we don't have to hear from me for that. One thing I did wanna mention, tied in, again, Mrs. Black and I are on a, on a plane today. The PTSA ELAC Committee meeting at Costa Mesa High School, this two-week period, addressed the topic of prescription drug abuse and the horrific and tragic results that can often result in that. And the accidental overdoses and the, sometimes the able, the ability to save someone. And there were, um, Jody Barber is a parent of a child that had resulted in, um, the death of her son. And, again, no one knew. And some of the, she talked about, um, what can happen, and we, and, and things that we never think about. And one thing that I never thought about was the, the types of drugs that children are using now. Sometimes they're, we all know about the, um, heroin derivatives, the codeine, the vicodin, the painkillers. But there's also some cancer drugs that kids are using, and they're told it's very, very strong. And so, therefore, they cut them into quarters. What they don't realize is a lot of the drugs, the coating around the drug is designed for a time release period. So, when, the minute that they cut that pill, it is now one big boost of whatever it is that's inside. And that's what kills them. And there were two videos that she provided, everyone there that wanted them. And I turned mine over to our Student Services Department, overtaken, and overtaken two. And it was children from Orange County who had experienced this and were honest in saying things like, "I, I never in my wildest dreams thought I would know what prison was like. And I come from a good family, and I come from caring parents, and this is what happened to my life, because they told me this could happen, and I said, 'Yeah, but not me.' I know that that happens to other people, but not me." And then, the second video talked about where they are now. And that was a very uplifting video, and, and you can turn your life around. It, it isn't always a steep slope into, to a horrible life. It, it can be a big dip, and you can hit rock bottom and come out of it. So, it was very enlightening and very well-received. And then, I also attended the Battle of the Bell Water Polo, Girls' Water Polo Team. It was my first water polo game, so I got lots of lessons on water polo. And Costa Mesa won the Battle of the Bell. And since there, I think we won three this time, I was very excited. So, that was yay, that didn't get mentioned, and the rest.
Do I need to stand between the two of you?
No, we, we, we do pretty well with Battle of the Bell. We know that it's gonna go back and forth, and, and I'm very kind when we don't. And so is Mrs. Snell.
We are.
Because we're Costa Mesa kids, so some Costa Mesa kid won Battle of the Bell, and we're okay.
Absolutely. I wanted to talk about, um, forming, um, an ad hoc committee. And I wanted to get everybody's, um, input on this. Regarding, um, appointing a permanent, not perma- a yearly board member that would actually sit up at the dais, that would actually, um, participate in the entire meeting, that would actually vote, I forget what those votes are called.
Provisional.
Provisional votes. Would be able to participate in the CSBA, um, uh, conference, and would get some training possibly from CSBA as well.
You need to remember that when we do the CSBA thing, you need a teacher that goes with that student or a parent. Okay, just so that we remember that and don't forget it.
But it sounds like, that's a good idea. Yeah, appropriate, absolutely. So, um, I just wanna hear everybody's, uh, before we form a committee, um, if we are interested in doing this. And I'd be interested in Van's input as well, 'cause he's kind of been fulfilling kind of that role a little bit.
Well, that sounds like a great idea, and I'd love to, I'd love to be on that committee, although I know I can't be. But I, I would be interested in serving that role, if you'd have me.
Okay, well.
I think it's important. I, I like the fact that, in years past, and I guess it's, it's sort of morphed into something different, because before it was an application process, and a student ran at the various schools to be the student board member report, you know, student board member rep. They, that's what they, they-
They, that's what they, they, that was an, it was an ASB position that they ran for. It's sort of morphed into, and anybody could do it. It's now morphed into, generally it's our, it's the ASB president. Or, often, I mean, I haven't seen a, most of them are all ASB officers of some, of some sort. And so it, it really has changed, and there are different ways to do it. I think that we, and these kids are very involved in their schools. And so I think that, I would love to serve on the committee, because I think there are different school districts that do it differently.
Different districts do it differently, too.
Yeah, they appoint, they interview, and the board appoints. The kids are all, select one individual from all of the, you know, there's a group, there's a cadre of them, and they all, they all select one person. I think it's, I think we, it's a good time to review and enter, investigate different opportunities.
And actually, my thought too, is I love having the students come and share what's going on. So, and I think Charlene has, and Charlene has brought this up before, that we could have, we could call them ambassadors, whatever. They come, they, because they don't stay that long, usually, you know, 30 minutes, and give the report about their schools. But there would be just one student board member that would sit up here and be very involved in what's going on. That was my thinking. But the committee would have to decide on the, on the process, and the selection process, the, the-
Roles and responsibilities.
The roles and responsibilities of that particular student, and how we handle the other students that come from each school. Mrs. Franco?
I think you also, as a piece of it, at least need to have a discussion as to it does not always, it would not always be a student from the same high school. It has to alternate high schools.
You mean each year?
In my opinion, if you're going to have a student board member. In other words, it could, should not be, I don't think, a student from Estancia who does it for this year, and then another student from Estancia, and another student from the same school.
That's something to talk about, yeah.
Yeah, I said that's something to talk about and to consider, that it needs, it, just one board member's opinion, it needs to alternate schools.
Okay, Van, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I would, I would think that it would be perhaps better to select the, the student board member based on which one fits the, the job best. So if that student happened to be the same two years in a row, because the applications didn't come in very well that year, I think it wouldn't be too bad to appoint the same person if they're the best person to be on that committee.
Could I also recommend, though, at the same time, that we look at how other districts have done this, where they have more than one high school?
Sure.
Because I think that is, that is a factor that comes into play.
Right.
So we're okay with going ahead with the committee of three people? I know, I was going to suggest Dana be on the committee because she has a connection to the student advisory, to students. I also, I know Karen is now, because she's past president, does she have a role in, with the students?
Who wants to, I would ask who wants to be a part of it, and then, and then we can go.
Well, everybody will.
Yeah, but you do the student advisory group.
Martha would probably be doing the research as we speak right now. She's probably looking up.
No, I'm looking up pros and cons. But I would do the research, I can get the research, I can get, I can get all of that.
Okay, so.
Because there is a, there is a student board member group. There, you know that, there is an association of students.
I figured there must be, there's association for everything, so I figured that would be, yeah.
Student board members.
If we form, if we form a committee, and this is a procedural question, if we decide we want to do this, which I, it sounds like we are good with the ad hoc thing, as far as formulating who's on it, I'd hate to exclude Mrs. Yelsey, because she's not here to pipe in. Is this something that we can?
Postpone.
Well, I don't necessarily postpone it. Can we agree that we're going to do it in public?
Let the president know you're interested.
And then, perfect.
And then we'll put three people together.
Perfect.
And we'll bring Mrs. Yelsey up to speed, which is bad.
Because I, you know, I'm, I'm accessible, so I don't have to necessarily serve on the committee.
Right.
But I, you know, but I would definitely, I do know students, you know, that have approached me about this, you know, for many years. You know, and that's why the student advisory is so near and dear to my heart.
Maybe this is an opportunity for the student advise, superintendent advisory committee to take a look at. Maybe that's what, maybe you-
We could, we could.
Maybe you-
But.
Well, we need to set the criteria for what we want.
My concern is i, if you're on the committee, that you might be seen as being excluded because you participated in, in how, in the requirements, and, and.
I think those are pretty clear, because I think you can get those, I think that there are policies on what student board members do and what their rights are. Because I mean, like I said, there is a-
Well, we can look at it. Let's go forward, we'll go forward, and we'll discuss all the-
Do we need to make a motion?
I don't know, do we need to make a motion? No, we don't need to.
It's your prerogative, you put the-
I just wanted to make sure you were all on board for, for doing this. And because if we're going to get, if we're going to appoint someone for the next school year, we would need to get busy, yeah. So thank you. And the only other thing on my report is, I'm sorry, did somebody, did somebody start to say something? Okay.
I was just going to remind you about the Costa Mesa Youth Sports Council meeting.
Okay, I, I will, I'll ask for that after my report. I did get an opportunity to tour Wilson with Principal King, and it was really a nice tour. I got to see the, the teachers using the new math curriculum and the new English curriculum, as well as piloting the new, the sixth grade teacher piloting the new math curriculum. So, and I asked her if she had $100,000, what, what would she spend it on? And she said art, more art. So, Wilson does not have the, the art master's program, and so.
She is a music major.
And she is an art and music major, yeah. But delightful, the, the way she interacts with the kids is really wonderful, and she's very dedicated, so I was very impressed with the school, and as we all are when we go out, so. Okay, so, how about board committee reports?
CROP is having their meeting on Thursday. I'm the president this year, so we're going to be undertaking a lot. But just to let you know that every, at every meeting, we have a, a student presentation from one of our students. And so this, this, this meeting, Brianna Cruz from Estancia High School is going to be sharing her, her experience with careers with children in the classroom. Now, our, that class is not in our master's schedule anywhere within the Newport Mesa. She happens to be taking it at Westminster High School. So she, it's an after-bell schedule, so she goes up there, and so she's going to be making a presentation. We are also going to be looking at, we contracted with Ewing in a, a compensation study, because as you know, the ROP teachers and the staff, they are non-union. So they are basically on a merit, they're on a merit pay. And so we've had to take a look at some, because what, if we contract, if we contract with Newport Mesa for a Newport Mesa teacher, we pay the Newport Mesa rate. If there are teachers, there are rate. And so there are some discrepancies, and we have the potential that we're losing, we could be losing some wonderful teachers, as well as staff. And so we're having, we're having a conversation about that, as well as continuing the conversation about our delivery model. So that's our report.
More to come.
Anyone else have a committee report?
Did you want to?
Do you want to do?
Approaching the deadline for when bills can be presented in Sacramento for consideration for the 2018-19 budget. Here. The deadline, I think it's almost, isn't it almost the 15th, which is tomorrow? Or is it the end of February?
Are you looking at me?
No, I'm, I'm looking at.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying, I'd have to look it up.
I know, I, I have to look it up too, but I, I think it's usually been the end of the month when they can do, when they can present bills, and then they begin to go through the process of being, set up for committee hearings, and that kind of thing.
Right, and if they don't make it by the, by that deadline, then-
But I'm not positive, it could be the 15th.
There's nothing going to be, to be considered.
Okay, the youth sports committee that we attended, it's, meets regularly with all the stakeholders of the city of Costa Mesa and all the youth sports groups, including our high schools and our district officials. And two things came out of that meeting. Costa Mesa United was saying, "If you have a grant that you want to be fulfilled by Costa Mesa United, get that paperwork in now, because the district, and also get information from our staff, needs to get to M&amp;O. They need to get to M&amp;O, so they know what they can work on and get their priorities squared away." And that Dr. Bauermeister will now be the district representative at the meetings to relieve Mr. Marsh to do his job out in the field. And because meetings are our life, Ms. Dr. Bauermeister is going to be representing the district. So, it's a really great meeting. If you ever want to go to a meeting that's very positive and proactive, and concerns come out and results happen, it's a great meeting.
The first Wednesday of the month at 7:30 a.m.
A.M. Sans B-Y-O Coffee.
Okay, that's all the committee reports, so informal reports.
Just wanted to remind everybody that last week was the, we celebrated councilors. Okay, and last, late last week, I got this letter from the Orange County Department of Ed. And it's an honor to tell, let you know that Janice Doozy, counselor at Costa Mesa, was one of their counselors of the year. Okay, so she is a recipient of the 2018 OC Pathways Counsel Award.
Yay!
So we're very proud of Janice.
Well deserved.
She is so great.
Thank you.
Okay.
No report.
Okay.
You had asked that I give you an update on the Estancia pool and refilling that pool. So here, here we go. This, this last little bit, the, the team has installed the acid tank and meter for the pool, caulked the joints on the deck, and repaired all of the pool lights, but one that is on back order and will hopefully be coming in soon. It won't hold anything up, we would do it later if we need to. So that's gone really well. And right now, what we're doing this week is putting the coating on the pool so that it will cover the plaster and the plaster repair. And we were able to get the ADA lift installed early. We thought that was going to be a longer lead time. It's come in early, so things are going well with restoring the pool.
We just have to wait for rain, so that we can fill it up, right?
Don't rain, please, we don't want rain.
I don't want rain.
No report. Okay, no report, no report, no report.
People want to go home early.
Okay. Move to adjourn in Mr. Noonan's.
Memory.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go home.